We'll call this meeting of the Bucks County Commissioners October 7th, 2020, meeting to order, and I would ask our Clerk of Courts, Brian Monroe, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, the civil public, which stands one nation who got difficult, pretty good justice.
Morning, everybody. Just so that you know, we are taking online public comment for the next five minutes. And our row offices that are here, we're trying to control how many people are in the meeting, would like to introduce themselves. And back there, we have the Sheriff, too, Sheriff Warhol, but he's kind of behind the camera. We would like to now move on to some commendations, and this is a really important and special day for us and for everyone here. It's one of the reasons we have lower lights on right now, because we'd like to share a film with everybody. So as soon as you're ready, we can begin with that.
The storms left their mark on many communities around the region today, but Doylestown in Bucks County was really hammered. WFMZ's Jamie Stover is there tonight with the latest. Jamie?
Rob, when you get on the scene and you see this daycare, your heart just sinks, thinking about the panic and the fear and the uncertainty, all the thoughts that must have been going on in not only the children's minds, but also the teachers. Especially when you take a look in the center of the building, you can see that's where the majority of the roof damage was. That is typically where most students would have been at the time of day when this potential tornado rolled through around 11:00, 11:30 this morning. However, the silver lining with COVID, if there are any, is that because of COVID, children were not in the auditorium, which is where that section of the building is. They were all in their classes. And there were 135 children inside the building when it, when this rolled through. Thank goodness, every single one of them got out safe. But I'll tell you what, if you're a parent, or if you're a teacher, you just take a look at that, and you can't help but feel intense emotion, no matter what the outcome was.
Yeah, we were scared. Yeah, we just ran over and was able to find them, and luckily, everybody was okay.
Eating the Jack and Annie books, and then we went to the world to check out the storm, but then it blew, and we just went. And then Marlene took us back, and then we went in the closet.
Yeah, it's like a little upsetting after the fact, right? You know, now that we've got him and think that everything's okay, but these guys did a fantastic job keeping these kids safe.
And earlier, when we spoke with Doylestown Hospital's CEO, he talked about how brilliant the staff and people in the nearby hospital and the emergency responders all were coordinating, getting all of those teachers, all of those students out. What they did is they actually walked them right next door to the radiation department of the hospital, kept the students in there for the time being, until they were eventually able to transport them, transport them to one of the local middle schools. It's not entirely clear if that's going to be a long-term plan. As of now, does it look like daycare is going to happen tomorrow? There are talks with the school district, some of the local churches, about potentially finding an alternative spot, also potentially setting up some trailers for the time being. Excuse me if you hear, there's equipment going through. Obviously, there's a lot of equipments. You hear the beeping. They're, you know, still working on the cleanup here, still surveying the scene and figuring everything out as they move forward elsewhere in the county. Big problem, thousands still without power. At one point, the county was saying 80,000-plus customers did not have power. That obviously becomes a problem when you're talking about things like sun pumps and air conditioning now that it's starting to get warm. But again, take a look at this building, Rob, and your mind just goes a thousand places, a thousand different possible endings that we could have seen here. And thankfully, we got the one that everyone could have prayed for, right? All 135 kids are safe, all the teachers are safe. Give everybody about a big scare, but other than that, everyone is okay. We're live in Doylestown, Jamie Stover, 69 News.
We have some other pictures that may be behind me, but what an event that was. And, you know, we know that it could have been traumatizing, and probably was traumatizing, not just to the kids, but to the people at the hospital and the teachers. And what we know about trauma is the more you talk about it, the more you can heal and be resilient and come back. So we are happy to be part of that healing and have you here. Commissioner Harvey was able to go out and tour the site, so I thought he'd like to make some remarks.
I want to thank, first off, you know, our public information staff, Larry King, as well as Scott Forrester, for helping us organize this recognition today. There were a lot of agencies and organizations involved in responding to this, to this emergency. And thankfully, of course, you know, the most important thing was that, you know, there was no, there was no loss of life, there was no serious injury, you know, and one of the reassuring things in talking to some of the teachers who couldn't say enough about their own colleagues, you know, but one of the things that was reassuring was that a lot of the children, of course, were understandably very, very shaken and upset, but, you know, being children and being resilient, you know, as soon as they get a chance to sort of be picked up by a firefighter, by a police officer, and carried to safety, or put in, put in a police vehicle or some emergency vehicle, you know, that, that became the most important part of the day for them. And hopefully, that's the memory that they'll keep, is that day they got to sit in the police car, they got to be, got to get a ride from a fireman. Just want to make sure we recognize all the organizations that were part of this. We clearly couldn't have everybody here. We did want to invite representatives, and we have representatives of the different agencies, but, but just so we're recognizing everybody who was involved, and I think it gives an idea of how strong a community is when it works together. And I think this is important, to recognize all these organizations, the Doylestown Fire Company, Midway Fire Company, Chalfont Fire Company, Warwick Fire Company, Plumsteadville Fire Company, Dublin Fire Company, Warrington Fire Company, the Central Bucks EMS and Warrington EMS, the Doylestown Township Police Department, Bucks County Sheriff's Department, the Central Bucks Regional Police, who handled the calls for Doylestown Township, so they could send their vehicles and their staff. Obviously, the people at the Doylestown Hospital and the staff and administration of the Children's Village daycare, the Central Bucks School District for their help in transporting people and students, the Bucks County Immediate Unit, obviously, our emergency services, and PennDOT as well. And I think it's interesting to note, it's a good timing, I guess, yesterday, that, or two days ago, I think it was Governor Wolf actually asked for a disaster declaration to be issued by the federal government for this area, which would help those who were affected in terms of getting the resources they need to build back and repair the physical damage that was done to buildings and homes, because the tornado that obviously had a direct hit was, was ruined with no warning. And that's the important thing to understand. There was a tornado warning in the county earlier that day, but it had long since passed. This tornado hit with no warning, so the staff had seconds, and no exaggeration, seconds to respond and do what they need to do. But then it hopped over, you know, the highway and ended up hitting some homes on the other side. And so there were, thankfully, again, no injuries. But I know we do have some resolutions here, and I think Commissioner Dideralmo is going to touch on those.
We do. We have some commendations for many people and storm superhero commendations. So Commissioner Dideralmo, if you'd like to share that.
Yes, thank you. And maybe first, I'd like to call Jim Brexler up, who's the president and CEO of Doylestown Hospital, for some comments.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to recognize the incredible work that our teachers, our kids, and all of the agencies that you just referenced. This was, if ever there was a moment where this community reinforced that it's everybody's end for the good of this community at any moment in time, this was certainly it, because everyone came and was part of this miraculous effort to keep everyone safe. And that's truly what it was. It was a miracle that what could have been just a horrible disaster is a physical buildings problem, but it's not a person problem, and that's great. But there is still healing. I appreciate the comment, Commissioner, about trauma does create some scars. And so even the kids are still working their way through the traumaticness of it, but they're learning that there is life after that and how to move on. So this is all part of that process. But I just wanted to give a tremendous thank you to you. Actually, the first call I got was from you, Commissioner. Precisely, I couldn't even talk to you very much because I was running to something else outside, but, but an offer of anything you all can do to support us, we appreciate it and continue to do. So we're proud to be there. One quick update, the news report stopped with, I'm not sure where they'll go, but maybe there'll be another option. We have actually landed our children in a childcare facility that's about a mile away that we were able to open less than a week, right after the storm, so all kids were back in business. We've actually added trailers on campus that we're soon to open up, and we've got some of our kindergarteners here with us and kindergarten teachers who, who will get to occupy that space. They get brand-new facility, not exactly new, but it's, but there's the trailers that will be there for them. And we're in the process of planning for the replacement of Children's Village as we speak. That'll be a bit of a time for us to get through all of the demolition and planning and the things we need to do to build back even something greater than what Children's Village was, which has been such a great institution and program for so many years. So I just want to thank you, and we've got some, some of our folks here today that really just represent what happened. And our kindergarten teachers who are here, Anne and Judy, were part of that effort to secure the children in place and then guided them out and into the radiation center. And if it wasn't for their thinking and their colleagues, this would have been a way different scenario. One last point I'd just sort of make, you talked, you referenced what the kids would remember from this. Actually, what I understand, having heard some, is their favorite memory of this, which was about these gigantic firemen and people carrying them. They don't remember me carrying them for some reason. But what their biggest memory is, is that they got to ride in a school bus for the first time. It's like, oh, we made it to the school. And again, another thank you is to the Central Bucks School System, who was immediately on hand and provided facilities for us. And so we're really appreciative of that. Terry Windish, our director of the center, is with us today, and Mark Pebble, the vice president of the resources that oversees this issue. And our stars really are Landon and Eli, who are two of the children that represent the 135 kids that they serve. Great. Thank you so much.
That's amazing. And in just a moment, we'll have everybody come up, and we'll do a picture, and we have something for the kids, too.
I want to do these ones.
Yeah, just read one for me.
Okay. Okay. I have seven letters of accommodation from the county and the commissioners, and maybe I might ask them to come up front, the ones that are here. Jim Brexler, Terry Windish, who's the director of the Children's Village, Sheriff Milt Warhol, Scott Forrester, who was our Bucks County Emergency Service Director, Jim Shepherd, Battalion Chief, 19 Doylestown Fire Company, and Jim also is a county worker who works at the prison, Chuck Pressler, who's the chief of the Bucks County Emergency Medical Services, and Dean Logan, who's the chief of the Doylestown Township Police Department. And I'm going to read one of the letters, and congratulations to each and every one of you for your service. On August 4th, 2020, the Delaware Valley Region, as well as some other national network news audiences, sat transfixed by frightening images from Doylestown, Pennsylvania. Children's Early Learning Center and an adjacent hospital hammered by the winds of the tornado spawned by the tropical storm IESUS. Much of the roof of the Children's Village was gone, shards of broken windows, glass-littered lobbies, and floors within Doylestown Health and its Cancer Institute. Vehicles weighing nearly two tons laid overturned in the parking lot, tossed by 15 seconds of 115 mile an hour winds. Yet somehow, from these horrific scenes of destruction, emerged a story of hope that served to unify our community, however briefly, in these contentious times. It was a story of courage, caring, and competence that came together at a moment when Bucks County sorely needed it. A story written in large part by you and those whom you represent here today. We are proud to recognize all of them in presenting these letters of commendation. The story of the August 4th tornado is one of quiet and collective heroism, of brave teachers and aides who calmed small children and guided them to safety, first into classrooms, then to a nearby lead-lined pen-radiation oncology vault, and finally, onto school buses for joyful reunions with family at Lenape Middle School. Of steadfast hospital workers who moved, and in some cases, carried a vulnerable patient to safer rooms and hallways, including cancer patients receiving life-extending infusion treatments. It is a story of able staff, administrators to maintenance workers, who kept the vital missions of the healthcare running orderly in the midst of nature's chaos, and of well-trained first responders, including fire companies, EMS workers, police officers, and our own sheriff's deputy, acting quickly at the direction of Bucks County Emergency Services Team to secure the scene, account for more than 100 small children and staff, and tend to the miraculously few minor injuries occurred. News reporters flocked to the scene and shed light on these uplifting vignettes. A grateful public responded with orders of help coming from churches, community groups, and hospital, among others. It was, in the subsequent words of Doyletown Health CEO, "A national model for emergency response on wide displays and a demonstration of excellence under pressure." We present these commendation letters to recognize a great many, if not all, of those who have done our community proud by serving their neighbors in a time of great stress and need. Together, they have demonstrated a level of skill and humanity that all of us would do well to emulate. We join all Bucks County residents in offering our gratitude. Congratulations to each and every one of you.
Now, we're going to try to do this in a socially distant way. Maybe Commissioner Dideralmo can bring down those commendations, and I'm wondering if we have two people here. We have Landon and Eli, who I was wondering why they look so similar, but it's because they're twins. If you might step up as well, and I can give you these, and if your teacher comes with you, we will give you commendations for all of your classmates. Well done. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Just take a minute to let everybody come back in, get their seats. Before we begin with some brief public comments, just want to make sure that we, everybody notices we have pink on, because it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so we are, everybody in the audience appears to, too, even though you can't see them. So we'll begin. Is there any public comment regarding the agenda items?
Commissioner, nothing has come through online, but I think there's some members of the public that stepped outside.
Okay.
And they have commented when they come back in.
So we'll just wait a minute, see if there is any public. So once again, is there any comment, public comment, on any agenda items? Now, everybody's here. Any public comment on agenda items? Commissioner Warren?
I do not consider myself a part of the staff or employee when I left, I just left.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. And I do have a couple comments. First of all, I would hope, I know you know, I hope, yeah, you know, I consider this level of government, the best, most informative level of any government. You can't, well, I can't walk onto the floor of the House of Representatives and ask a question. We are the elite, like, today, the supervisors, so this is the level of government that I think is the most informative and one to emulate. I commend you all for having television wherever they are, so that people can see it, something I supported always. But it occurred to me that there's an ironic twist to all of this, in that had I stayed here to hear the presentations, I would have known far more about whatever organization was here than I will know from the 75 items on the general consent item, because nobody ever talks about it, other than on paper, I vote boo. And I get the sense sometimes, people say, what the hell is Warren up there again? I, as a teacher, never thought there was such a thing as a dumb question. You have forgotten more about county government than most you ever know. You're my voice, usually. 75 items that you run a past on, when nobody even discusses it, and there's over $7 million worth of items there. So I asked you to consider something, I don't know whether you want to stick with it forever, but there ought to be someone other than me mentioning, asking a question about this, which gets me to my question. And again, I sincerely support your effort to open this government up, but we've opened it up. People stay away. It's nuts. First of all, on item number 13, the, what was the percentage for the new contract? Why didn't you get to that one? And the other question, concern that I have, this is not an attack, it's an attempt to learn why we're going to spend over $7,500,000 on COVID money on this consent agenda. And we're going to buy two sheriff's vehicles. We're going to buy an ambulance, we're going to buy a coroner's vehicle, all because of COVID. Now, from a coroner's standpoint, I wouldn't think his clients had much concern with COVID.
Her.
But, lies. Excuse me. But my question is, I know you all must ask sometime, but how is it that COVID has caused the librarian to have the office in hands? We're going to buy 18 cameras for district justice offices with three different contracts, one to buy them, one to install them, and then one to teach people how to use it. And I don't know whether it's a television camera, like I had at home, that even, well, maybe not me, but my grandchildren could run, or whether it's really something technical. So these are just some of the questions that, at some point, I would hope you or others, when they come up, rather than just pass through it with me. And I'll continue to ask questions and continue to get nasty letters for being opinionated or something like that, but I'm delighted. And I do think this is the best level of government for it, like a teacher.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments on the agenda item? I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we do the consent agenda. So we have our agendas split into two things. One is the One is the consent agenda. Those are pretty much things that we all know there's no difficulties with. It goes in front of each of us, and we pull off anything from the consent agenda that we have concerns about and move it to the regular agenda. And things we know are significant for discussion, we also move to the regular agenda. I think we have been pretty consistent in having people here to answer questions on everything, but especially on the regular agenda. The length of time that this county uses to spend just reading things, you know, there's, there's no need to do that for the things that are on the consent agenda. But certainly, if you have a question, you know, that's what we're here for. I don't know what my colleagues can think of any way to get more people here to ask questions. But if you can, you know.
No, but I think one of the things that certainly we've done, and this was something we had planned to do, Commissioner Marcegway and I, even last year, we were campaigning, was to make this meeting more, you know, more open to the public through live streaming it. We were obviously forced to do that faster than we were planning, thanks to the coronavirus, which is why we still have the tripod camera here, and still have a little bit of a, of a, a little bit of a jury rake system in terms of getting it up and running. But as Commissioner Marcegway said, we do get, obviously, all these items ahead of time. We do have a chance to go through them. We do have a chance, as I do, you know, somewhat regularly for something I don't understand. I'll, you know, email the division leader with, you know, asking, you know, give me some of the specifics about this item. I'll ask the, you know, COO for, you know, for, you know, any kind of input. The overwhelming majority of what we're looking at here is, is pretty routine from what, you know, my, in the nine months I've been here, sort of understanding, it's, you know, you know, a trash collection contract, that, you know, it's just expanding it because we're opening up a new building in Levittown for adult probation and parole. So we have to add that to the contract. It's, you know, there are improvements that have to be done, you know, as a, as an agency that's, that's as large as we are, with as many divisions and departments, there are routine kinds of things that have to be done. This is really, coming from the township supervisor point of view, I can describe it as, this is really the bill list. You know, every month, you know, township supervisors and borough councilmen approve a bill list. And the bill list is usually longer than, than this is in terms of, actually, it's almost always longer than this is. It could be 15, 20 pages, single spaced, of all the bills that were paid. And it's, you know, oil filters for police cars, and it's, you know, veterinary appointments for the police dogs, and it's, you know, light bulbs for the offices, and it's, you know, paper. It's, it's the very routine things. We don't go through every single item, explaining every single one. I think, you know, certainly, you know, Mr. Warren's points are good ones. While, and just to touch on a couple of things he mentioned, the ambulance that's being purchased is, is an ambulance that is specifically designed for people who have diseases or viruses that are airborne. So it's one of the reasons why it's more expensive. It is a, going to one EMS agency, but it will be used throughout the county. And that's really to protect the people themselves. The same is true for the coroner's vehicle, certainly. While, you know, the, the remains they're carrying aren't going to care as much, as you put it, about the vehicle they're traveling in. Early on in this crisis, and I don't know if there's even been any science to prove otherwise, people who pass away from COVID still may be contagious even after, you know, they, they passed away, in immediate time they passed away. And so certainly for the staff of the coroner's department, they, they need to be protected as much as possible and make their jobs easier. You talked about the law library, a lot of that has to do with some of the physical changes here in this building that we've had to shift things around. And so there's some, some interest there to see what we can do, to kind of make that work a little better. But, you know, and trying to be as open as we can and putting up as much as we can. One of the things that is on here is a redesigning of the website, which is something we've looked to do. Our website really is antiquated beyond belief. 2005 was the last time it was updated, or when it was created. There are a lot of things that people should be able to do so that they don't have to come here to do it. They don't have to come outside. They don't have to interact with other people if they want to, you know, do any of the various services, get a dog license, get a hunting license, those kinds of things. You can't do that on our website. And so, so changing all that to make it more transactional, to make it something that you can use on a smartphone successfully is going to limit the amount of interaction people have. That also goes for the district justice offices, you mentioned. Installing those cameras can allow more remote hearings so that people don't have to be, whether it's attorneys or, or police officers, or people who are there before the magisterial district justices. They don't have to necessarily be in the building and in a room with other people, they can be remote. And that can even work, it's been working across the street pretty effectively for the judges of common pleas. So we're expanding it to them as well to allow for that social distancing and more efficient use of space and time. So, thank you.
Yep. Andy, I couldn't agree with you anymore. And you know I served 25 years up in Harrisburg. And you're absolutely right that ordinary citizens cannot go on the Florida House up in Harrisburg, or for that matter, down in Washington DC on the Florida House when issues and bills and funding is being debated and, and being able to speak up. This is the level of government where you can come in here while we're passing this agenda. Anybody in the public who lives in Bucks County can come here and make comments on what we're doing. And my favorite saying is democracy at work. And, and I just think these meetings and at this level of county government is a perfect example of democracy at work. Now, when you were up at the podium there, you said you are my voice up here, and I don't know if you were looking at me or, or looking at the, like you were looking at the three of us, just me. And, and I can assure you, Andy, that, and you talked about $7 million plus of money that we're spending on, on COVID. I mean, all of us here at the county, I mean, this is kind of like a blessing and a curse. The blessing is we got $109 million from the federal government back in April or May to spend countywide on issues that were related or impacts that dealt with, with COVID. The curse is that we were, according to the legislation, have to spend it by the end of this year, 2020. So we had to make some really tough decisions because there were a lot of different entities, groups, organizations that wanted this part of this money. And when you looked at me and said, I'm your voice, I can assure you that every decision that was made on how to spend this COVID money, I was part of making that decision. The two commissioners in the majority included me in every meeting and every decision, and I had absolute input on how the money was going to be spent. And we did our very, very best to be fair and balanced and put the money where we, all three of us, in consultation with our staff and department heads as well, putting the money where we thought it would be put best, in best use. And I, I think, you know, nothing's perfect. And I, you know, we're not infallible, but I think we did the best job that we could. But again, I want to ensure you, I had absolute input into every decision that was made on where this money was going to be spent. And from, from the very beginning of this COVID, the three of us, the three commissioners, along with most, all the department, we were here every day in Doylestown. Every day I was here in Doylestown. You know, hurting, holding virtual meetings, Zoom meetings, on, on conference calls. I mean, you know, I was part of every decision that was going to be made. So I just want to let you know that, and I appreciate you, you being here and asking these questions. I mean, I think that's important for a, for a healthy county government and a healthy democracy. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much. So is there a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to motion to table 14A until next month. We're having some meetings. Is there a second for that table?
I'll second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we will now vote on the consent agenda, which is items one through 19 that was been motioned.
Till the next meeting or till?
Next month.
Next month.
I'm sorry. So it's, voting on one through 19, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Pass, so this moves us to the regular agenda, starts with number 20, if I can turn the page. First thing we have is the commissioners, Bucks, with a contract with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for $5 million to approve CARES funding pass-through for county school districts and career tech centers to cover expenses related to COVID-19 pandemic, subject to approval by the county solicitor. And the Peace Center have approved a contract to provide walking while black, love is the answer training to remote learning to, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is for $20,000. Any comments or questions on that? I guess, do you want to say anything about the IU or anything?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly, we know that, you know, schools has, have been sort of a flashpoint as we've moved, you know, out of, in the spring, but also as we moved into, you know, August and September. A lot of people concerned about how schools were going to be able to function, how the kids were going to be able to be educated. There's the overarching problem of those students who, or special education students, who have IEPs that may require a certain level of instruction that you really can't do virtually. And so schools have really been struggling to do their best. We did provide every school child in Bucks County, public, private, parochial school child in Bucks County with face shield as a way of helping to mitigate any disease spread. But we also know that the schools themselves have really been struggling to do the things they need to do. The intermediate unit has offered to be sort of an agency that can help us take the, the money that we're talking about here, the $5 million, and, and give it to the school districts so that they can have an idea or have some resources to do the work they need to do, especially as a lot of them are now starting to bring students back in some way, shape, or form, and others are discussing when they're going to bring their students back. We have a lot of kids still learning virtually, but learning in school, I think people are starting to realize has, has benefits to it that they, you know, all the people that thought, well, kids, pretty soon kids will just learn, you know, by robots or like on, on, you know, by looking at TV. And while they might learn some things from Elmo and, and Paw Patrol, there's certainly a limit to what they can learn, you know, when it comes to more advanced curriculum. So this, I think, is really helpful, help the, thanks, well, for the help of the IU in, in making this happen.
Thank you. And just briefly, the Peace Center is doing this contract for us for all county employees. This is a program that the district attorney, Matt Weintraub, brought to the county. It's a movie that is followed with a 30-minute discussion, and it has to do with bias and helping people to be more aware of that so that we can create a community that is working better together. The Chamber of Commerce has been bringing this around. It's out in different school districts, and different police departments have participated in the discussion. And now it is our aim to have 2,400 employees participate in, in this. So we are grateful to be able to do that, and because of COVID, we will be doing it completely virtually. Number 21, the African American Museum of Bucks County approving the rental of the county property at 27 Langhorne New Town Road in Langhorne for $29. This was approved in a previous contract, but we needed to change the dates and the amount, and this will carry us through till September 30th, 2049. And another contract with Pinoni Associates to approve the contract to provide engineering and design and consultation services for the proposed African American Museum of Cora Creek. This is subject to county solicitor approval in the amount of $216,090. This is related to our, use of our historic preservation funds. Any questions or comments on either of those? Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Number 22, this is for Information Technology Civic Plus Manhattan KS. It's a contract to approve redesign of the county website. This will also be subject to final approval by the county solicitor. It's in the amount of $863,304 and is way overdue. Just applause on this one, right?
Yeah.
23 is our, is a police training contract for the Wright Academy out of the villages in Florida. This is going to approve a racial intelligence training and engagement leadership class in the amount of $43,130. This is being done in conjunction with the chiefs of police. They actually brought it to us, and there will be a number of police officers hopefully representing each police department, hopefully representing the sheriff's department and our Department of Corrections. And all of those departments will also be contributing a certain amount of money to be able to participate in this. This program was brought to the Upper Darby and Yaden area and has been, is nationally renowned. And so we are very excited to have them being able to bring it here. And any questions on that?
Now, this would typically be something we would send people there, but because of COVID, obviously, we're doing it. This is, having to do this in a different format, so.
Yeah, so I don't know how much that might have cost if we had to fly everybody to Florida. So maybe this way is working a little better. And number 24, the workforce and economic development. This is a contract to authorize disbursement of the Bucks Back to Work Small Business Grants for round two of the recipients in the amount, in the amount of $49,900. It's each, what, sorry about that. This is not to exceed $49,999 for recipients. Commissioner Harvey, did you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, the first Bucks Back to Work Grant Program, which we did in May and June time period, gave out a little over $14 million to about 900 businesses all over Bucks County. Businesses received, some are in the area of between $5,000 to $25,000 each, based on their need, number of employees, cash on hand, other aid they've received. There was a state program that was launched right after that, so we kind of allowed that to run its course. And meanwhile, we took a look at that first Bucks Back to Work Grant Program and, and decided to make some changes here and there, some tweaks, improvements, we hope, in terms of the application process, and also kind of honing down some of the requirements and changing them a little bit. The first grant program was for businesses no more than $700,000 in annual revenue. This program, we upped that to no more than $2 million in annual revenue. Still had to be small businesses, which is classified as 49 employees or less, had to be Bucks County-based business. We had 388, I think, applicants apply to this. You know, it's certainly a little less than we thought, but we're obviously willing to help. And this will be capped for a variety of reasons, for tax purposes, for, for the recipients, and also in terms of CARES funding and regulations, we have to cap, the maximum amount we can give is $49,999. That'll be for the, the larger businesses. We have some businesses that are close to $2 million in revenue who have applied, but we still have a lot of businesses that are much smaller than that. So we still will be giving out funds to those roughly 400 businesses, a little less than 400 businesses. And our staff is, is working through that still. We're hoping to have that finalized tomorrow. And then, you know, hopefully being able to cut checks and send them out sometime next week, so.
Any questions or comments on that? Is there a motion then to approve the items on the regular agenda, number 20 through 24?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Moving to the budget adjustments. Mr. Bascola.
Good morning, commissioners. For your consideration, two budget adjustments for 2020. Adjustment number 11 is to account for an additional $25,000 appropriation for the Opportunity Council. And adjustment number 12 would recognize the revenue that we'll receive and all the costs associated with insourcing the Workforce and Economic Development Board into the county for July 1st, 20 through 12/31/20.
Any questions on the budget adjustments?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have personnel actions. Any personnel actions for today? We do have a list, I believe, that was provided. Is there a motion to approve that list?
I'll make the motion to approve the personnel list.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving to board appointments. Commissioner Harvey, do you?
Okay, yeah, we have two, the New Americans Advisory Commission, which met for the first time last week. There are two more spots available. We have two gentlemen who have put in a little bit of interest, Mr. Mohammed Murtaza and Mr. Bhaskar Patel. Both would be appointed, and their appointments would run till January 2nd, 2024. So I'll make the motion to appoint those two gentlemen to the New Americans Advisory Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good. And on to other civics. Commissioners, do you have any that you want to propose?
I have a couple. For, I noticed in our list that we do get that the American Red Cross usually gets $1,000 from the, the county. So I'll make a motion, well, I'll put three of these, I guess, in the same motion, but I don't think there's going to be any. same motion, but I don't think there's going to be any dissension for these three, but the Red Cross, $1,000. I know VIDA, which is Volunteers and Teaching Alternatives, is an organization that my wife actually volunteered for back when we were dating, you know, before she decided to make the mistake to marry me. You know, she was smarter back then. But they, $12,000 donation is typically what the county provides, and also an organization called Gilda's Club, which is named in for Gilda Radner, the famous comedienne who passed away from cancer many years ago, is an organization that does offer assistance to people that are fighting cancer. That is an organization that we typically give $4,000 to, so I'll make a motion to give $4,000 to Gilda's Club.
Is there a second for those motions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have one for the Lee Lekkerman Foundation, and that would be for $1,000, and this will go towards the event they are having on November 7th. That foundation raises money for people to go into substance abuse treatment. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The Chief Operating Officers' Report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have just a few announcements. First, though, I want to ask Gail Humphrey to update us on the election, if she could.
Sure, I'm happy to. Thank you, Margie. I think what everyone may be interested to know, and we're trying to get the word out, but they may not have seen yet, is there are three satellite on-demand, open ballot locations operating in Bucks County right now, and they are going exceptionally well. They're in Quakertown, Doylestown, and Levittown. And what it is, is we have special equipment there that is prepared to print any precinct in Bucks County. We'll provide you with the ballot, we'll provide you with the secrecy envelope, and we'll provide you with the outside envelope for your declaration, and then you can go ahead and deposit it in our secure ballot drop box. I did it myself. It went very well. It was very easy. I did it in Levittown. I went home and joked to my family, it was almost like getting my flu shot. I did it, and I'm done. And it was fantastic. People, each day, it's ramping up and using it more and more. A lot of people are using it in Doylestown so far, but I urge everyone to please consider and go in doing it if you have not applied for your ballot application yet. If you have, though, you can still do it. You can still go to one of those three locations and say, you know, I heard about it, and I think it's great, and I want to exercise that opportunity. And you just need to go ahead and tell the folks working in those locations that you did apply for a mail-in application, however you want them to void that one, and give you a new on-demand on the spot, and they will do it. The ballot boxes are also at each of those locations, and mail-in ballots are beginning to go out today.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
In addition to Gail's report, I have a couple of events to update everyone on. Drug Takeback Day is October 24th, and it's held in more than 45 different locations throughout the county. On that day, they will be accepting drugs between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, so if you could visit those sites and drop them off, that would be fantastic. An update on our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Program. Our October 17th event is full, although if you do go on the site and register, you will get an email if folks drop off and are unable to attend for any reason. It was capped at 500. There is still availability at the next event, which is November 21st and 22nd at the Newtown Campus of the Community College, and those slots are still available. I've been asked by our Planning Commission to remind folks that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting is going to be held, and it's the last one this year, on October 8th, and it will be held virtually at 2:00. You can go on the county's website for details if you'd like to participate, and there are instructions on how to do that on the county's website, on the Planning Commission's page of the website. And then, at the risk of sounding like a PSA announcement, but I'm going to do it anyway, at every meeting, with regard to eviction prevention, if you are having difficulties paying your rent and/or if there are landowners out there that know of people who are at risk for paying their rent, please have them contact the Housing Link at 1-800-810-4344. And if you're having difficulty finding, someone's not answering that phone, please let us know. We will make sure that we get you in touch with someone to help you. The Commissioners have kindly contributed and agreed to use CARES money to help you, so please contact that phone number. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the Solicitors' Report?
Thank you, Commissioner. Back in May, we provided an update as to the Taha class action matter that was really one of the biggest challenges that was presented with this new administration when they took office back in January. We had good news to report, and the Commissioners had authorized really a historic resolution. The class action and the jury verdict that had been widely reported regarded a liability of about the $68 million that was due to a class that had brought this case against Bucks County and the correctional facility. Back in May, we announced, and the Commissioners authorized, a settlement agreement that just focusing on what was due to the class brought that potential liability down from something over $60 million down to a cap of about $10 million, and we announced that all of this was subject to the final approval of the federal judge overseeing the case, and that we would go back to court on October 1st to present the developments in the case in terms of who had filed claims and where things stood at a hearing scheduled for the judge. That hearing did take place on October 1st, and I am very, very pleased to report that all of the news to come out of this is very good news. The judge has not yet granted final approval, which we would expect would come in the form of a written order. However, all the steps that have to be taken in order to get that final approval, in terms of the parties coming to agreements, in terms of the submissions being sent to the court, have now happened. What we now know is that, as we reported back in May, if we did not reach that cap of $10 million in payouts to the class, then we had agreed on a formula wherein our Public Defender's Office would have funding to provide some new programming. And I'm very, very happy to announce that, based on the estimates and the projections from the Claims Administrator, it appears that the number will be far, far lower than $10 million. The latest estimate is about $6 million. They're still verifying claims, so it's possible that number may come down, but we're going to work with that assumption right now. And what that means is that there would, in fact, again, if the judge approves this, there would be funding to provide, the funding for a new unit in the Public Defender's Office that would be known as the Expungement and Pardons Unit. This case started because Mr. Taha was a person who had a criminal record that was expunged, and then found his personal information posted on a website that was run by another company. And the whole idea behind this Expungement and Pardons Unit is to help people who are entitled to have their records wiped clean, whether it's because they received a pardon, whether it's because there was a mistake and they shouldn't have been arrested in the first place, or because they qualify for expungement under Pennsylvania law. And so, assuming that we have that final approval, we will be submitting to the Salary Board, which is consisted of the Commissioners and the Controller, all of whom have been very outspoken in their support for second chances, for helping people rebuild their lives and move on. And so, we would expect to present that paperwork, to provide the appropriate funding for a unit that would be led by a new deputy chief, the chief of the pardons and the expungements. And I see that our Public Defender, Anne Faust, is here. I want to thank her leadership, along with the leadership of this Commissioner, in developing these ideas, which, again, have not been authorized or approved yet, but are what we plan to propose in helping put behind this very complicated court action behind us and finding the real opportunity in this crisis.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioner comments? I'll start to my left today. Commissioner Deidre Alamo, any comments?
Well, maybe just a couple, a couple, and the one thing I would like to point out again, because there's a lot of talk about election, and we've been talking about it a lot, and, you know, this one idea of precanvassing and allowing our Board of Elections to open the envelopes up and scan the ballots before Election Day. I mean, and again, we need, we need help from the legislature to do that, so I just want to, again, make a call. We recently, the three of us, wrote a letter to the Governor and to the leaders in the House and the Senate, Republican and Democrat, asking us to give us, not only Bucks County, but all the counties, more time to allow us to open the envelope, scan the ballots without counting them. Counting would not go on till after the polls close on Election Day, but this would not benefit one side or the other. I mean, this is, just would be good government, and I would hope before Election Day that the House and the Senate and the Governor can get together and do that. So, that's one thing. A second thing, I just want to, kind of like a personal note, if I have a little bit of time, we're not, we're not running over. I mean, I read a story recently, it was in the Philadelphia Inquirer, about a man by the name of Jerome Allen. And you might know Jerome Allen. He's right now presently an assistant coach with the Boston Celtics, but if you follow his story, he grew up in Philadelphia from a very, very poor family. Basketball was his way out of poverty. He was a star at his high school, got a scholarship to the University of Pennsylvania, and was a big star there at Penn. When he graduated Penn, he actually played in the NBA for a number of years. And then, after his playing days were over, he got his dream job. He came back as the head coach of the University of Pennsylvania, Jerome Allen. I mean, that was his dream job. And he coached there for a few years, and all of a sudden, he resigned, you know, added a clear blue, and nobody knew why. And a short time after that, they found out why, because he was indicted by the federal government. The FBI had done an investigation because he was into that, where he was charging or helping kids get into the University of Pennsylvania and charging the families large sums of money, and he was using the basketball program to help that out. So, the FBI investigated him, and he said he was walking on a street one night, and he interacted with a homeless man. And the homeless man was panhandling, and Jerome Allen said, he just, he just made a comment, "Well, I'm not in the mood right now, you know, I'm not doing real well." And the homeless man made a comment to him, and he said, "Have faith and pray, and whatever your problems are, you will be helped." And he said he walked away from the homeless man, and he said to himself, he said, "How did that guy know I am at the absolute lowest point of my life? I am looking at 40 years in jail right now if I'm, when I'm going to be sentenced." He said, "My whole life has come apart. How did he know that I was thinking about going home and blowing my head off?" And because of that interaction with the homeless man and talking about faith and prayer, he said, "I didn't do that. He said, "And I just went back and kind of reorganized where I was in my life and said, 'I'm going to accept responsibility for my actions, and whatever happened will happen.'" He said, "He kind of changed my whole life around and where I was headed." And he ended up, I think, spending a little time in jail, but he did get back and got his life back. He's now a coach, assistant coach with the Boston Celtics and NBA team. And all of us who work in government, and whether it's county government, or state, or local government, boy, we have an awful lot of responsibility, because our job is making decisions, but a lot of our jobs is constituent-driven. And by that, I mean, people come to us looking for help, no matter, no matter what it is. And we have a duty and responsibility to help those people. And I read that story, and I just kind of said to myself, "You know what?" He says, "Absolutely right." So, it just kind of reminded me to say that when people call for help, and because we work for the government, that we have a responsibility to try to help that person out. When that person calls, not to put them off for a day or two or direct them somewhere else, I mean, we owe that person our very, very best to get on their issue and their problem right away and try to help them out, because you never know when your act of help is going to change that person's life or that family's life. And whether you work in government, or no matter where you're at in life, and, you know, you're out in the world, working or raising your family, and you just never know when something you do, an act of kindness to another person who's in a bad spot, might change that person's life forever. So, that's the way I always looked at government, and I've always been a constituent-driven person, where when people call for help, I'm going to get on it right away, and I'm going to help, because you don't know how bad a position that person is. I just wanted to share that story with you, and I thought it was a really good story.
Thank you for that. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Deidre Alamo, for sharing that. Just want to touch on a couple of things echoing a little bit of what our Chief Clerk, Gail Humphrey, mentioned with regards to the mail-in voting. Certainly, it's, it is obviously new here in Pennsylvania in terms of how widespread it is, but mail-in voting is not new, in essence, because we've had absentee voting in this, you know, Commonwealth for decades and decades and decades. And I've said, I think, multiple times, that, you know, the first, probably the first half of the votes I cast were cast by mail through absentee, because that was at college. But we all know people, whether it's, you know, college kids or people who are senior citizens who just don't travel as easily as they used to, or people who have a disability and weren't able to get to the polls, who voted absentee, people who just had vacations planned or had work schedules that didn't allow them to get to the polls. So, in that sense, it's really not new, and what we're looking at is just a larger application of that. Couple of things to keep in mind, we've gotten, obviously, a lot of questions about it. The ballots will be going out effective today. This is roughly the time they would have gone out anyway, just in past elections. Obviously, this election has got people very, very keyed up and concerned about making sure it goes off properly, but the timing, it really isn't off very much from what it was normally. There are two envelopes you're going to get in that, the envelope that you are mailed. One is the mailing envelope, one is the secrecy envelope. You must include the ballot in the secrecy envelope. If it is not included in the secrecy envelope, it cannot be counted by this county or any other county in this Commonwealth. You're not allowed, we're not allowed to even look at it. So, it must be in that secrecy envelope. Don't write on the secrecy envelope. There's no need to sign it. There's no need to do anything on that envelope except seal it, put the ballot inside and seal it. And the other envelope, of course, is a mailing one. It has the address of this courthouse, the Board of Elections. It's already postage-paid. On the back is a declaration, which needs to be signed and filled out, and that is so that we can verify who that ballot's coming from. There have been some rumors about, you know, your signature has to exactly match precisely what you signed when you applied for, you know, your voter registration, however long ago that was. That is not accurate. We have a lot of very, very talented, hard-working people in the Board of Elections. None of them is a handwriting expert. And so, while there has to be a signature, I've heard from people who are concerned, people, senior citizens, who said, "Well, you know, I registered to vote when they were 21-years-old," because you, some of them were pre, you know, the 27th Amendment, it was back, way back when, and so, they, they don't remember what their signature looked like at that time, you know, and they don't necessarily have the road registration card that even has access to it. And so, they're worried that if their signature's off a little bit, their ballot's going to be thrown away. No, not true. Not true. But we do have to have that filled out on the back, we do have to have it signed, and obviously, we want to make sure that every vote is counted, and so, just be cautious and be careful. You know, you're going to get those in the mail, fill it out, mail it back right away. A lot of times, people put it off to the side, "Well, I've got time, I'll send that back," and then it gets piled under, you know, all the magazines and other stuff that comes in the mail and junk mail, and pretty soon, it's November 5th, and you say, "Oh, what's this under here?" And it's your ballot, because you forgot to mail. So, just send it back as soon as you can. And also, we did get some guidance today, which we've shared with both political parties already here in the county, and we'll be already here in the county, and will be available through the Board of Elections. If there are people who want to use the drop boxes, but for whatever reason cannot, especially if they have physical reasons where they cannot get to the drop boxes, you can actually designate someone to bring it for you. Your mail-in ballots have to be dropped off. If you're dropping them off at the drop boxes, they have to be dropped off by you, by the voter. You know, however, we have had situations of people who have disabilities who can't get out, can't make it to Levittown, Doylestown, or Quakertown. There is a form you can download. You have to fill out that form. The person you're designating to bring your ballot has to fill out that form. And then that person bringing that form with them is allowed to bring your ballot to that drop box. And that's not a blanket. That doesn't mean one person can fill out the form and someone can carry 158 ballots with them. No. If you're going to bring 158 ballots, you better have 158 of those documents signed by 158 different people and you, because that is the law. And so that is, you know, something that, through the Americans Disabilities Act, we want to make sure that people who have some sort of disability, have some kind of impediment to physically getting themselves to a drop box, that they're able to make sure that ballot gets put in. If they're a little concerned about putting in the mail, they can have somebody drop it off for them. Okay? So just a reminder about that. And I do want to thank the fellow commissioners, and also the staff and other people here who are wearing pink today. This was something we started on the Falls Township Board of Supervisors several years ago. Quite a few of us, myself included, had members of our families who we've lost through cancer. In my case, my father, two of my grandparents, and aunts, my father-in-law, all lost in the past, you know, 20 years or so, 30 years, excuse me. And so we began wearing pink ties in October, and pretty soon, the staff that was coming to the meetings would wear pink, just as a reminder for people to take care of themselves, to, you know, visit the doctor, you know, people, once you reach a certain age, and sort of I'm there and myself, you know, you need to start getting certain checkups, you need to start taking better care of yourself, and making sure that you're, you know, if, God forbid, something does happen to you regarding cancer, that you're catching it as early as you can. Because we know that is the best guarantee of the successful defeating of that disease. So thank you, everybody, for that, and we'll be able to be very cognizant. A lot of people were afraid to go to the doctor for most of this year, go to the hospital for most of this year, but now you're able to do that. So make an appointment if you need to get a checkup and get that checkup done.
Thank you. And I'll just add two election items that I was thinking as you were talking. The first is that, you know, there's ample parking at Levittown and Quakertown if you're doing a drop-in ballot, but we will reserve two spots out in front of the administration building for people dropping off here. There'll be a sign there, three minutes to park, to run it in and run it back out again, so you can take advantage of that. And also, as with the ballots and everything, hold on to your patience. This is going to be, you know, like in the 1800s, they waited days for the returns, and we're going to take a little time, so everybody is going to have to learn to delay that gratification a bit. Is there any public comment? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jim Nielsen from Springfield Township Supervisor and Chair for Springfield Township, Bucks County, because we're often confused with other counties. I came with two points, and I have a third to add to that. First, I'm also on your Ag Preservation Board here for the county, and I thank you for approving the McGowan property. It adds to our inventory. And what was not mentioned is that is a key property surrounded by three other reserved properties, so it fulfills our greenways within the township, which Springfield Township is leading, I believe, as far as preservation goes. Second point that we have, there's concern in our township, as with most municipalities, we have multiple polling locations. We have one polling location, which is typically held at a church. Those folks in that district are now moving to a second polling location this year. And there's a lot of confusion in our community about where they are to go to. Their first polling location was physically at a secondary polling location for a different district, so they had two folks going to the same building. People weren't sure where to go. Now they're going to a different church. I've had people come to me personally at the end of last week and tell me about how they're going to be going to a certain church, and they were giving me the wrong name and the wrong location. So I'm hoping that our Board of Elections does have planned to send out communications to everyone in that district, because I have not heard that at our level. So it'd be helpful. We will be doing news blasts at the township level, but I'm hoping that the county will push forward on that. And the third point, to speak to the commissioner's comment about helping people. And to that being said, I'm active in scouting and also active in 4H. And I see that gratification over the 20-plus years I've been involved with both, in helping and teaching that spirit that you speak of to our youth in the community. And to the point now where it's generational, where I'm starting to see some of the boys and ladies come through in their 30s and passing it forward. So it's great to remind people of that, and hopefully, everyone in the room does that to some extent in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I do know the Board of Elections, none of the polling places we moved, and I'll turn to Ms. Humphrey again for some commentary if she wants to, but the polling places we moved were really moved only if the polling places that were existing requested us to move them. So in a lot of cases, we had, for example, senior centers that told us that they weren't interested this year, weren't interested in being polling places, which, you know, of course is understandable. And so when that happened, you know, we did move them. But the only ones we moved, we didn't move a lot this, we moved a lot in the springtime. We didn't move nearly as many this time. But it was really at the request of that location, they just said, "We don't want to have to be a polling place this year," and for whatever reason that happened to be. But we are going to be sending out information to every voter who's registered, where if we move their polling place, they will get something in the mail that tells them where the new polling place is. Ms. Humphrey, do you know when that's going out, if any chance? No? You don't know? Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, but we will send that out, and we'll do our best to communicate with you so that you can do that kind of blast on your network as well.
Some have gone out already of polling places changes. I think maybe because Springfield's lower on the list, that these folks haven't gotten them yet. In terms of alphabetical order.
Commissioner Warren?
Couple of things, mostly generated by some of the things you've all said. One, again, was, before we go, could someone please, 13A, state what that percentage was? And the other sort of follow-up, not continually beat this, and I am well aware and absolutely agree with you, it's just insulting to me as a constituent to have somebody read 75 renewals for the Ben Wilson Senior Center, or the Zechman Center, or the MHMR. But I agree, that doesn't need to all be read. But I also believe that you all don't come to the work sessions all of the same mind as you would when you vote on this. I think it would be very helpful to me, as a constituent, to hear the backstory. You, Commissioner Harvey, I agree, you had questions. Well, we would like to benefit. I mean, I know you're saying, "Look, trust us." Well, you know, trust to verify, but it is helpful to have some, to hear that my elected officials also had, not about Ben Wilson Center, but some of these others. That's the point with that one. And I totally agree, too. Absentee ballots isn't the concern. Bucks County or Pennsylvania aren't doing massively. If I ask for a ballot, because I'm not going to be there, that's fine. But if 600,000 people get ballots mailed to them without asking, that's some of the changes. And the change this year, what about the person who is going to give someone else, "I can't get to my mailbox, so I'll give it to Margie to take." How do I vote all the other times? That's what may have absentee ballots was for. Given ballots, though, people fail around, it's crazy. And the only last point was personal thing.
We give everyone two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we have a work session the Tuesday before all of our commissioner meetings that is public, where we do discuss things and ask questions and whatnot. Any other issues or comments?
I know he asked, I think, Mr. Warren was asking about
Oh, 13.
the operating engineers contract. So I asked Ms. Kev if she wants, I think he was looking for the percentages, the raise increase, is that what we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's Right. So it's 2% per year for the duration of the contract, with a quarter of a percent contribution to the health care.
Yeah. Quarter percent increase in the contribution, yeah.
And if you would like, we can provide you with a summary of any other changes. Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, our next meeting is October 21st, 2020. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.